Hey, good evening, everyone. Let's start tonight's meeting. Thank you all for coming. It's a special meeting so we can get through and approve the 2425 budget. Thank you for making the time, and please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, thank you. First off, I would ask for any public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Please state your name, and limit your comments to a reasonable amount of time. Hearing and seeing, no one. That's not fair. There is someone in the audience, but no one coming forward for a public comment. Let us move then to the next item, which is new business, and that's why we're here this evening. So, as you will recall, last meeting on Thursday, we had yet to receive an approved budget from the state. This weekend, that was rectified, albeit late, hence our special meeting this evening to try to get this under the deadline, which is, I guess, Friday. But that said, our first item will be, hopefully, our final presentation regarding the budget. There were some open items that we had discussed, and I understand that Terry and Harvey and team have gone back and figured out a good way forward. So that's going to happen now, and I'll turn it over to Terry to introduce this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So as we ended last meeting, we told the board that we were listening closely, taking notes, so that when we got to tonight, our presentation tonight would reflect what we believe we heard from the board. So what you'll see in front of you is a reflection of that. There was general consensus on the three identified reprioritized needs, and that was the business teacher at the high school, full-time elementary teacher to address enrollment growth, 20 additional UPK seats. The board continued to discuss, how could we do something with taking a bite out of the sound system? So you'll also see that reflected. So Harvey went back and met with the experts in that arena to talk about, you know, what would make sense as potential Phase One. You don't want to do too little, where you're not being able to capitalize on emerging technology like Bass talked about last time. So what you see the figure here is really what it would take to do a good Phase One for noticeable improvements. So that's also reflected in the needs that would be addressed with this budget. So Harvey will walk through the actual amount of increase that we saw from the governor's adopted budget, and then two avenues that we could go about addressing those four identified needs for the district.
Hey, Harvey, are you, can you get closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, there we go. All right. Looking at the hand that I gave everybody, the sound system itself is, the quote that we got was 256,500. I will preface this whole conversation, in going back and looking at this, in reviewing it and so forth, I noticed that the number that I had used in the presentations was 236. It was a typo. The reality is that it's 256,500. But moving forward, in reviewing this and identifying what we can, what we absolutely need to do to make a significant change, we can spend up, we can spend $145,000 and wait on the balance. Now, you may say, what are the things in the balance that we're waiting on? A good example, and one of the big items, is acoustical tiles in the auditorium. That's a big number. The quote on that is, it's close to $70,000. Okay, so those are things that, it's not as if the auditorium is not acoustically sound, it's just, this is an enhancement as part of this. But the nuts and bolts of the equipment that we absolutely critically need to replace is 145, okay? Now, with the state budget being finalized, we got an additional 88,319. So if we take the 145 and back off that increase in aid, we still have a shortfall of about $56,000. So the question now becomes, how do we, how do we fill that gap? Where do we get it from? And you really have, you really have three choices. You can do nothing and not include the sound system in there, or you can pull money from a slightly increased tax levy, or a slightly increased assigned fund balance. So if you look at the little chart down below, the proposed budget doesn't change, okay? With regards to if we increase the tax levy enough to absorb the 56,681, that would bump the tax levy increase from 1.72% to 1.83%. And the assigned fund balance would stay the same. If we use the assigned fund balance, we are not going to touch the tax levy, it'll stay at 1.72, but our assigned fund balance would go up by that $56,000, going just over 2.8 million. So that, that's the real decision to be made tonight. I think the, the, being able to do this sound system and include it in there, I think it's important, and I think it's, it's very doable. It's just a question of which pocket, which bucket do we pull that balance of 56 from?
Thank you, Harvey. Any questions for Harvey or Terry on this item? Hey, Christine, yeah, please.
Can you remind me, you had the chart with the cost to the taxpayer, and I think, you know, if your house is assessed at $450,000, it was $11 a month, maybe, roughly? So if we pass this on through the tax levy, what does that look like? I know it's minimal, but just for the sake of really understanding.
I, I don't have it worked up, but it would be, it would be...
Rounded. Like, yeah, like $5, maybe, right?
Yeah, you're talking significantly.
Okay, I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot for an exact, I just want to, you know...
Yeah. I can't, I don't, I, I have to calculate, but it really couldn't be more than that $10.
Okay.
It's just such a small piece of it.
Okay, thank you.
Louis?
Yeah, Harvey, you talked about includes and doesn't include. You noted a couple of things that's not included, you talked about nuts and bolts. What is included? I mean, I don't even care about, you know, the type of wire, but soundboard speakers, infrastructure?
Sure. So I'll, I'll give you kind of a nutshell of it. This would include all loudspeakers with amplification, that includes installation It includes replacing multiple analog mixers with a single digital system. We don't have that right now, we don't have a digital system. It includes replacing the old analog system in terms of the wireless microphone system. So everything is going digital, and those three things make up the 145.
So if I've seen the high school, right, it looks, sounds like the soundboard, the board that's in that booth, is going, and the, and the speakers?
Yep, yep.
And the microphones.
And the mics.
And the mics.
Correct.
And the mics.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is probably really important, the mics.
I think Brendan can correct us if, if we're wrong, but the mics, I think, were really one of the biggest issues, because they would, some of the wireless mics would cut out and stuff at times, right?
Not only would they cut out, but then they would pop at the least opportune moment. So this, I mean, as, as far as the most noticeable change, I think that's the, that's the part that would, the audience would, would recognize, speaking as a layman, but then those managing the system would reap the benefits of everything else that we're, we're talking about.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, any, Christian?
So on the question of like, how to pay for it, for reasons that I, you know, covered in last meeting, I would definitely would go the tax levy route on this. But I have two other, another question, because one of the things I saw on the property tax report card was the increase in the capital reserve amount, and just how, where is that coming from and what, so it's increasing from now through the end of June? So obviously, this is new money being allocated to it, and what is, how is that calculation being made?
Okay, so, keep in mind, it's not, it's not increasing it from now until the end of the school year.
No, I understand that, but I just was trying to interpret the property tax report card number.
Sure. The, what we're really looking at is that projected column at the end of this year, and that's really, again, they, it's projected, they, they tell us, we know it's estimated. That's based on the anticipated surplus we anticipate having this year, and with that surplus, where would it go? Okay? So it's, it's not, you know, cast in stone here, but a large portion...
I know that we voted last fall to allocate it.
Right.
And so what you're pointing is you're estimating it now, and you, and the idea would that there be an anticipated action in the fall?
Correct.
And if we, if we did it allocated there, where else could it go? It just would sit, how that would affect our, let's say, what we're allowed to have on the assigned fund balance? Would we be well over it as a result of not allocating it to the capital reserve?
We would be well over it, and the other options you have is to put it into any one of the other reserves.
But there's not really a large enough reserve, I mean, given the, the current size of the reserves, to put that much amount in any of them would pretty much change, let's say, the magnitude that's there, that affairs. I'm sorry, that's not a clear question, but I was trying to say is that, given the current level in some of those reserves right now, to put the additional 1.3 roughly million dollars would be a huge increase in any of the other reserves?
It would, it would be. I mean, it would be spread out, that wouldn't go into all one particular account, but certainly the, the two big ones that come to mind are the TRS and the ERS pension reserves. Things have been somewhat stable, but it's very cyclical, and there will be a day when that could easily jump back up to where it used to be.
Okay. And then, I guess my, and this is, oh, thank you. My last point is that, and I know this is the last minute, but I think it's a small thing, one of the other things that was on the, on the, the needs assessment was the Point Two for the phys ed teacher, and given how small it is, and given that we do have some additional money that we didn't even have last Thursday, would it be interesting out of the $14,000, $15,000 to take an existing teacher and to make them full, you know, full-time? And if, you know, as a small, I think it would be 3%, 3, 3% of a percent on the tax levy increase, and whether that would be worth doing as a small addition, that I don't think would change the overall number.
So Christian, just to be clear, you're referring to the Point Two full-time employee physical education teacher that was listed as a top 10 need for 14, correctionally, $14,803?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for that. Terry?
Some background on why it didn't make our prioritized list. So we did take a look at some of the smaller items, like hall monitors, the Point Two, and again, the shifting of, of things within our existing budget is where we landed. So if we run the numbers and we see that we have a need for an extra section of PE, we could run a six-period, which is giving that teacher another section, it's already within our budget, we allocate X number of six periods based on past history. So Harvey's kind of run those numbers, had that conversation with Principal Welhelm and Joe DeBolt to say, we've got it covered if, should the need arise.
So, so that Point Two is actually like .167, which is like 1/6 of a, is that?
It's 1/6.
Yeah.
It's a 1/6 period.
Yeah, so it's .167, not .2, but rounding, it's .2.
Well, what they do is, the way we, yeah, it's different, because a teacher teach, a teacher has to teach five periods. So this would be, they'd be teaching a six-period, consequently, they get 1/6 of their salary.
Right, and 1/6 is decimal 167.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, the, the reason why we would put a Point Two on a board needs assessment is a .8 teacher versus a 1.0 is a, is a difference between them being part-time and full-time, so even with the six-period, they would still remain .8, but with that added six-periods, so that's just the numbers piece with...
Understand.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, Bass?
Yeah, thanks, John. Here on this sheet, I mean, basically, Harvey was saying our recommendation would be to use the tax levy instead of assigned fund balances. So what are the pros and cons for each option?
So, the pros and cons, there's, there's some non-monetary pros and cons that really, I think, play into this more than the 50,000. It's not a huge number.
Yeah, that's, thank you. My problem is that the amount is small.
Right.
Careful, we, we have to make our mind, but it is small nevertheless, but again, I mean, hypothet, not hypothetically, theoretically, what are the pros and cons?
So with regards to the tax levy, anytime you increase the levy, you know, you, you never really know what the trigger point is with the public or an individual to say, that's just too much, you know? So we always try to keep the levy low enough without, you know, impairing the, the budget. The, the other side of the coin with regards to the assigned fund balance is that, when you, whatever your assigned fund balance is each year, if you don't have that again next year, you have a gap automatically. Okay, so if we're not able, if, if the assigned fund balance is 2.8 here, next year, we have to come up with another 2.8, otherwise, we've got to find some funding somewhere else. So, you know, you have to, you have to make it manageable.
So if I could just add to that, and because this item is a one-time item as opposed to one that is perpetual, like when you hire someone, you're going to hire them in perpetuity, right, till they retire? When you buy something, it's a one-time item, and so you're using the unassigned, you're assigning a fund balance to it, and it's, it's not going to repeat next year?
Yeah.
Is the thought? And that's, I think, one of the pros that Harvey was alluding to.
Yeah, it becomes a pro because there's no risk in it.
Right.
It's one-time payment.
Right.
So, I mean, honestly, I'm finding it more attractive than the tax levy increase.
Again, I just, I'm, I'm impartial from the perspective, I always try to keep that assigned fund balance down, but it's only $50,000. It's, no one's going to die on that hill, you know, it's just whatever the board chooses.
I mean, it's really, that's what we're here to discuss, basically, is how we want to do that as a board.
So, Christine?
I think Christian explained last week, if I understood it, that, so that's a one-time cost, but we now have that in our budget. So we don't have to go ask for that money again next year, and it, but it's there to use towards another need, whether that's a teacher, a, a piece of equipment. So next year, when we need to ask for, you know, tax money, that's already in our budget, we don't have to ask for it again, and it's already been spent, so it's not allocated to something yet next year. Did I understand?
Yeah, but the overall budget is the same. We're not changing the top line either way, we're just talking about how we're going to fund it, so...
Right, but if we fund it through a taxpayer, through the levy, next year, if we, that money is, oh, no, I see what you're saying. Sorry.
It's, Christian's argument was to increase the top line.
Got it. The money is still there.
These options have the same top line.
Yeah, sometimes I have to think out loud, thank you.
All good. Brendan?
Yeah, so this is making me question my own understanding of the next year's calculation with the, if we do it out of fund balance. So because it's not a recurring cost, well, let's, let's back up. If we do it out of fund balance, we, next year, we've got to replace that money, right?
Right.
Because it's not a recurring cost, does it replace itself? Like, is the, taking that money off of the table, in essence, replacing the money? Or do we still need to find $56,681?
In essence, it does take it off the table. You remove an expense, you remove a revenue, it's neutral.
It's neutral for future periods, unlike other things that are recurring.
Great, now it makes it harder for me to decide.
So, what I'd like to do, because I, we're, we have, I think, Terry or Harvey said there were like two or three decisions to make tonight. We started bleeding into, I think, the how you fund it decision, but before we get to that, I'd, I'd like to, to get to hopefully yes on what we're going to fund, which is the, the proposed budget amount that we've gone through, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a resolution, which is item number two, in the amount of $90,260,773, which is what Harvey's district needs basically sums up to, as well as the rollover budget that he had briefed previously. Do I have that right, Harvey?
Yes, it's the rollover budget with these four items.
And just to be clear, because the four items, as it's called out, it says, Sound System 265, it's funding 145 of the 265.
That is correct.
Just for the avoidance of doubt.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Which then gives you a round number of what we just said, 90.26 million and change. So could I have a, a motion for that?
Subdued.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? Hey, great, thank you so much. All right, so with that behind us, let's continue the conversation about how we want to go about funding this, right? As, as Harvey mentioned, the, the budget actually had additional dollars associated with it from his previous estimates, something to the tune of about $88,000, of which about 86 odd was related to foundation aid. So, I think Harvey has prepared those differing numbers that you see on the budget summary. You know, if we used it basically one way or the other, I, I don't think a third way, which is, you know, half of each, makes sense, given the, the dollars that we're talking about. So I, I'd like for us just to focus our, our discussion going forward on, as Bass kind of rightly pointed out, what are the pros of tax levy versus the pros of using the unassigned fund balance, as Harvey's little memo here dictates? So with that as kind of our, our baseline, let's just open up for this, further discussion. Anyone want to go first? Richard? Bass? Oh, I'm sorry, Bass, then Richard.
Yeah, I, I think I mentioned last time, and I'll repeat that today, in the environment we're living in right now, it's an inflation we're living in right now, that's not a good thing, that's a very bad thing. I know the media, you, they invite experts, you know, on different talk shows, and they tell you there's no inflation and the situation is improving. It is not. These are bad times we're living in, and for that reason alone, I would not touch the tax levy, I would not increase it. I'd like to decrease it, if possible, it is not, so 1.72 is the limit. Now, the good thing, on the flip side, is the amount we're talking about now, to increase the tax levy from 1.72 to 1.83 is a tiny, small amount, right? But still, kind of, people, when they go to vote, they're going to look at 1.72 versus So I would not go for tax levy, I would prefer the assigned fund balance, as, John, as you mentioned, this is one-time payment, it's not going to recur, it's not like we're going to add in one FTE or something, you know, we have to live with it, it's one time, let's go for that. Assigned fund balance option.
Thanks for that, Bass. Okay, Richard?
Yeah, thank you. So I think it's a, it's a tough decision, because I think there's pros and cons for either option. You know, I, I do agree with Bass, I think with the inflation and the times we're living in, we want to keep this as low as we can, but if you look at it on the other side, the difference between 1.72 and 1.83, I think it work, it comes out to like 50 cents or less per month, more per household, something like that. So, I mean, I'll go with whatever the board decides, I'm kind of on the fence about it. If I had to lean one way right now, I'd probably say tax levy, but I'd be good with using the fund balance as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Christian?
So, I covered this last meeting, so I'm not going to recapitulate everything, but because some, I think people misrepresented what I was saying, is that it's not about necessarily the top line, it's about increasing our fiscal capacity in the revenue stream that we control. And look, this is a small amount, so this is not going to have a huge impact one way or the other, in the sense that, but the thing is, when you, the tax levy is what we can raise and what we control. If we say that maybe state, state resources are not going to be great in the future, or unstable in the future, I would like to increase our capacity for future budgets, even if it's only $50,000, because it increase, helps us raise money in the future. And it's not, and I don't think that there's going to be any perception difference in the public between a 1.72 and a 1.83. I think, and the way that's going to be perceived, you're either going to vote for it or not vote for it, those are the same. And we should keep in mind what the tax levies are for our neighboring district. districts, as the budgets have already been adopted. Washington Hills is 3.26. Valley Centrals is 2.99. Warwick is 3.51. Goshen is 2.9. Woffengers is 3.26. By any standard of, any standard comparison, uh, no one could say that we are, in a sense, gouging our taxpayers to support this budget. So, we're talking about a small difference that is, um, you know, a magnitude different than what anyone who'll be looking around will see. And I think that's saying that for the small difference of 50,000, I think the additional benefit of increasing the base of the tax levy is worth doing it through that avenue.
Thank you, Christian. Louis?
I'll take it.
Okay.
So, I was here during the times when budgets failed, and it was a woe is me on, um, now what? And, and our, our, our supporters really went out and rallied and banged drums in the street and, um, talked to people about it, and, and it, it passed. But that was something I don't, I don't wanna try to have to, have here again. Um, I don't think personally that our townspeople look at our neighboring districts and say, "Oh, well, theirs is high. Ours can be high too." Um, I do think that 1.72 and 1.83 will be palatable. And in our district, I do. I think we've, we've built a lot of trust and faith. Um, and there's wa- wa- way more to do, way more work to, you know, be done there, and, um, you can't lose, lo- lose sight on that effort. Personally, personally, I'd take the delta for the new sound system, 111.5, and put it in the assigned fund balance. And I'd put the 56 in the tax levy and leave the tax levy at 1, 183, and fund the whole thing at one time, based on a, a, a few items. And like Bass said, you know, incompatible systems, you run into challenges, as well as a lot of things in the district have been done, and have been done in pieces in my history. Um, and, and I don't like the idea of having something almost done and having, you know, the next, we'll get it, we'll get it in the future. We'll get it. And then by the time the "we'll get it" comes around, well, what we purchased 10 years ago is already, the tech is already at a date, and now we're buying the new tech. I would advocate for funding all of it in one shot. However, however, where to put the $56,000, I think I'd put it in the assigned fund balance and, uh, and leave the tax levy
Thanks, Louis. Brendan? I guess we're going around the horn.
Yeah, I was, uh, I'm, I'm still, uh, I'm still up in the air, so I guess everyone's just gonna listen to me talk to myself. Um, I am, uh, we, we talked last time, a bit derisively frankly, about 50 plus one. But, uh, if I'm at 50 plus one, my plus one is probably, uh, tax levy, just because, um, I don't think that it has a big, uh, I don't think 1.72, 1.83 registers i- is, is really a difference. Um, although I recognize it is real money that comes out of my pocket just as much as, uh, everyone else's. Um, there, there is an argument to be made for expanding our fiscal capacity, and, you know, you put, uh, look, it's all, it's all real money. Y- y- you can say, "We're gonna take it out of this and take it out of that." All of our money comes from the taxpayer, you know, one way or another. So, we can, we can run circles around, uh, what's the more palatable way to explain that, but the essential truth is, is always going to be the same. So, the question is, uh, what is the better strategic decision? And there, it's, it's around the margins on either side. Does 1.72 help us pass the levy more effectively than 1.83? I guess it doesn't hurt. Uh, but does $56,681 being in our budget next year put us a little bit closer to getting something tangible? Yeah. It, it, more so than it probably helps us at the polls. So, for that reason, I'm tax levy, but I am, it's not a religious conviction, so I'm gonna go with, uh, where, whatever the collective thinks is best, but those are my two cents.
Thanks, Brendan. Christine?
Call him out this way. You wanna go back? Doesn't matter to me.
Christine?
Yeah.
Started with Richard, so I feel.
Yeah.
That's okay. Um, I feel like I'm just gonna repeat some of what Brendan has said. I think I do not take it lightly to ask taxpayers to put more into their monthly bill. I understand that the money is from taxpayers regardless. However, I think that the amount we're asking about is, um, minimal. It's, you know, we're not even talking maybe $4, I think. Um, so, I, and I like the idea of having that money in the, um, unassigned fund balance next year, 'cause we just don't know what next year's gonna look like. And we could need a lot more next year, depending on state aid and, you know, whatever else is coming down the pike. So, I feel better having it in there, um, and using this as the, the one-time cost out of the, the tax levy. I think if people are, listen or watch us debate this, they'll know it's an insignificant difference. If they don't, that's the concern, that does 1.83 feel that much heavier? Um, it's still under 2, which, you know, before being on the board, if it was under 2, I was happy, you know? Um, I didn't think much of it. I trusted and, and went forward. So, I think I'm, I'm leaning towards the tax levy, so that we have the money in the unassigned fund balance next year with the unknown of what state aid and needs will be at that time.
Thank you, Christine. Jim?
Yeah, I, I won't belabor the point. Um, again, it's, it's, uh, de minimis amount as a percentage of the budget. 50,000 over 90 million is .06 percent, if I'm doing my math right. So, um, I'm gonna maintain, uh, internal consistency in the way that I've handled this in the past, uh, on previous budgets, and I can't even remember the expense at this point, but, um, when it's been for recurring expenses, uh, which essentially is hiring staff, I've always said, you know, we have to do that as part of the tax levy to make that a sustainable, ongoing, uh, expense, to know that the money is there for the next year. Uh, for one-time expenses, I've been okay with, uh, getting those out of the fund balance. Um, and I'm a fiscal conservative, so I always support doing things of the lowest amount of taxes, uh, while still maintaining, uh, all of the resources that we need to educate our students as district. It's always a tight rope to walk. Um, so, in this instance, I'm gonna say that I prefer to take it out of the assigned fund balance. Again, I'm happy to go with the will of the people, and I'm gonna vote yes either way, whatever the will of the majority is, um, because it ultimately is a tiny fraction, and we're, we're, you know, literally splitting hairs here on the size of the budget. But, um, I think the important part is what we agreed to a minute ago of, "We're gonna do this. Here's the amount. Here's what we're gonna fund." Um, but my preference would be assigned fund balance.
Thank you for that, Jim. Um, so, let me add my two cents on this, where I'm kind of approaching it. Louis, I, I liked your idea, um, earlier, um, about the total amount, you know, if we could find a way to, to fund it all, then it makes sense to fund it all. And I, I, I believe that to be a prudent kind of tact to take. Um, I heard Terry mention that, you know, with surplus funds, we might find an opportunity to, to, to add that 1/6 of a class for that, uh, that physical education course that seems to be busting at the seams with all the, the students. So, so, um, I, I think that maybe that the ability to, to, to fund it, um, going forward in totality within the next 12 months makes, it seems, seems like a reasonable estimate to me. I, the way I look at this, and, and again, it's a, I take a, my own principled approach, which is similar to what I heard Jim articulate. If there's a recurring item that we are putting in the budget now into the future, um, yeah, we should ask the, the, the taxpayer to cover that. If it is, um, something that's a one-time item, um, that we want to do, need to do, benefits our kids, um, it seems to me, like Brendan said, money is money. Well, surplus money seems to be old money, and, uh, asking the taxpayer for an increased tax levy seems like new money. So, I'd rather use old money than, than new money. And, but that's just my principled approach to how I tackle most things financially. Um, the numbers are somewhat de minimis, but, but I just wanna point out a couple things. What we just approved, this budget of 90,240,000, that budget represents an overall increase year over year of about 3.5%. And so, I know we were talking about fractions of fractions, about, you know, this only represents X, but when you put it in the totality of what we're doing year over year, 3.5% is a pretty, pretty big move, especially after the move we had last year. Um, and it's all going to, I think, prudent, needed, and, uh, uh, appropriate places. And we know that we still have more to do. The difference, and this is what I want to, to, to retort a little bit about, the difference between 1.72 and 1.83, the difference between funding all the needs, okay, that have been identified, and what we just approved in terms of the actual budget year over year would be .7%, less than 1%. And so, we took a very conservative, yet mindful approach to whittling that needs list of 10 items down to what I'll call 3+ knowing that there might be more items that might be able to be, uh, filled going forward based on the use of surplus funds. And so, let me transition real quick to the use of tran- uh, surplus funds. I think Christian rightfully asked the question about reserving, about the unassigned fund balance, what it might look like. Harvey, you know, won't close the books until June 30th, but he probably has a really good idea of, of what the surplus amount of funds will be for this year, based on what we've expended, what we've encumbered, and what we've actually received revenue-wise. Within the report cards, he has rightfully projected, right, not bound our hands to these numbers, but rightfully put a, a dollar figure where Capital Reserve II would receive some additional surplus funds, TRS, ERS would receive. Secondly, I think the, the, the preponderance would go to the Capital Reserve Number Two, which is 1.3 million. The, the retirement systems would collectively receive about $775,000 of reserves. If you were to take that estimates and say it is representative of 96%, 96%, uh, those values that he has in the, that report card, with that additional 4% to Louis's point, you could pay for that whole sound system to include the panels. If you were just to knock off 4% of that over two-odd million that is gonna, next year, be, um, put into some type of a, a, a signed or restricted, uh, fund balance. Only 4%. So, I know the numbers seem to be really small when we start talking about percentages, but they're meaningful and they add up. And that's why I feel that as a fiduciary, it is my obligation to have this money assigned, uh, um, or this expense assigned, uh, paid for through the surplus funds through an assigned fund balance. I understand everyone's position on it. Um, I'm not saying the opposite of my position is, is in error. It's just how we all look at the world. I respect how everyone looks at the world. I think that type of, uh, diversity of thought is really valuable. Um, and in this case, if the numbers were higher, more than $50,000, I think I would be, someone used the term, you know, uh, uh, falling on that grenade or sword or dying on that hill. If it wasn't $50,000, but it was $500,000, I think I would be making a, a passionate plea for it to be in the unassigned fund balance. But that's, again, that's how I view this. Okay? So, I'm not sure where that puts us, but if I was... And, and so...
Maybe.
If I could just...
Should we sit out?
People to change their vote.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you've educated.
Well, I don't think we've taken a vote. We've, we've shared ideas, right?
Perhaps we could duel or joust?
Well, I don't wanna put, uh, my colleague, Mr. Schaffner, on the spot, but it feels like you were the closest. You were the one, you, I think you held onto the fence. I don't think you actually jumped off.
Yeah, I didn't jump off.
Yeah.
It sounded like you were right behind me there.
I was for a second.
Yeah, right?
Pushed them.
Yeah. So, 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 again, I don't think there's a right or wrong here. There's probably acceptable versus preferable in, in the way I kind of look at this. But I just, we all know now, if you look at what we've all said, we seem to be kind of four and four. Is there anyone who, who wishes to change to see if we can move off this alleged stalemate?
I'm gonna read the room, and, uh, I think the four, uh, assigned fund balances were, uh, more principled stances, which I respect, and also realize we can run around and chase our tails for the next half hour, but you're not gonna change that position. So, I will gladly go to assigned fund balance, so we can put a bow on this and...
I would say the same.
Hey, thank you.
I didn't look at it through the perspective of, as you explained it, Jim, you know, like, recurring versus standard. So, you know, you make a good argument.
But I was gonna switch to tax levy.
Yeah.
I agree with those two.
Richard?
Yep, I agree, um, yeah.
Okay. Well, fantastic. No, I, I, I really appreciate everyone's perspective on this, and that, I think, gets us to a, a better place, in a place that, as a board, we all can defend, right? I think in past situations, we've seen people, uh, act a little differently. But if it is the consensus of the board to, to, to support one way or the other, then I think we all should, uh, find our way to, to support it as members of the board. Um, okay, so with that said, there is, um, a resolution, as I understand it, um, Property Tax Report Card Resolution Number Two. Um, I am looking at it. I'll take it as per written here. It says, "Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education does hereby approve the Cornwall School District Property Tax Report Card as required by New York State, uh, Regulations, Education Ed-, uh, Regulations." I will, as I'm looking at this...
There's two attachments. Essentially about to approve.
Right. Which attachment is the one that leans for assigned fund balance? I'm sorry. I don't have the document. Is there...
If we pass it with, uh, fund, fund balance, the one that's, uh, posted will be the, 'cause that's executive bias only. So, that's just for information. So, if we pass the resolution for fund balance.
Oh, okay. Great.
So, we all know what we're putting on.
So, 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 just for the avoidance of doubt, the, the resolution is tied to using the, uh, assigned fund balance to fill the gap of 50-some thousand dollars for the, uh, the sound system. Everyone clear on that? So, could I have a motion? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Nope? Great. Well, thank you, everyone. And, um, that brings us then to our second recognition of visitors. Anyone? Any takers? Fantastic. Well, then let us, uh, have a motion to adjourn, please.
Subdued.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Good work, everyone, and enjoy the rest of the night.